I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anything for the community forum tonight?
Uh, well, other than Jolene Connick, if you'd like to get her there or wherever.
I thought I'd adopt the agenda.
Okay.
And because she's listed as nine point.
Yeah, as nine point, yeah, so just fine. You're right.
We'll do that.
Okay.
So I think we're good there.
Yeah.
Conflict of interest, maybe a lot.
Did you bring those forms out of this?
I thought of it in an, something else happened.
All right. Um, and now we have a couple of changes to the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Nine point one is going to be moved to the October meeting. And we're going to move up the CTE collaboration to right away, but any other changes? Okay. Can I get a motion for, to adopt the agenda?
I have a question.
Brooke? Second?
Second.
Ashley? All right, call in favor?
Hi.
Propose? All right, motion? Agenda's adopted. Um, we're going to have, uh...
Jolene Connick.
Jolene Connick talk about the CTE collaboration and... Our demographics in school have changed a lot over the last 10 years. Um, you know, 10 years ago, we had well more going to college than we did.
Okay.
But now it's kind of reversed.
I can click here to make the dictionary.
I want us to look at, um, you know, after rolling programs. So the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. I didn't know technology would work, so I made paper copies for everyone as well. You're welcome.
I have been too, but my screen share keeps kicking her out. It's dialogue. We'll get it at some point.
You say this, and I see if I could pull it off with my phone and your play. Thank you. Who's that for?
Well, you are.
I'm going to try with my phone.
Is this agenda sealed, Lindsay? One eight nine three nine seven.
I'm not going to remember that.
There we go. All right.
Perfect. All right. So the title of this is Quadrant Communities, that says Senate Bill 59. Um, that's the title I have right now for the grant application that I'm doing. So, um, it feels like it's really relevant. I couldn't think anything more creative or anything, um, so maybe it'll come to me yet. Um, so we have tons of opportunities within our region to open up for all students. Um, Lake Area Tech and Northeast Tech and Crown District and Rev Aviation just submitted within the last month an FSA, FAA Aircraft Pilots Grant. Um, so I don't know when the turnaround time for that is, but it would offer two different dual credit, um, courses per certification. One is drone, um, let me pull it up here. Let's see, two dual credit courses for 24, 25, and 25, 26. Uh, the first one is a K-12 Aviation Certification for High School Practice. Um, so aviation is one piece, drone is the other. Um, the grant would cover the cost of instruction, curriculum, equipment, including flight simulators and a fleet of drones. It would also include a 30-minute discovery flight for the student, um, to go on, and then any other expenses associated with offering those two courses. So, um, we're excited to kind of hear where that ends up, hopefully with Lake Area kind of spearheading it and including Northeast Tech High and us gives more opportunities. So that would be available to your students if we collaborated and, you know, working better with our students. The other one is the Collaborative Equipment Grant, which is a Senate Bill 59 that I've been currently working on. Um, that, so to start with, you have a list of courses that Crown School District currently offers to their students. Now, what we told, um, Tom the other day when the U of M superintendent was, we don't expect you to say all of these courses are offered to your students. If you have solid programs, we are not trying to take that away from you. We want to add value to what you already do. Um, so I wouldn't expect if you have animal science that you're going to send your students that's for animal science. That's ridiculous. Why not, you know, maybe we can collaborate on some things? I think that would be awesome. Um, do some tours, some workforce things together, but that just doesn't make sense. So, you know, the FAA, some of our culinary classes, um, our construction class, I don't know, um, if you have a current architecture and construction class, you know, those kind of things, which could be available as soon as next year, um, if this grant, or I mean, whether or not, yes, this grant plan may go through, there's still opportunity for your students to attend it. Do you, um, I believe you have access to edits and all of this, um, so you can share that however you would like with your families. So to make our vision, um, which is pretty big, kind of become a reality, we have worked with JL, JLG, and we would like to add on to our current CTE center to offer more programs. Last fall, um, we surveyed the eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders in New York and said, if we offered this class, would you take it? This class, you know, we did a whole bunch of different classes. The top ones that we came back with were law and public safety, education, diesel tech, small engines, precision A, and machine tool technology. We've already started education and law and public safety, but we don't have the space, the availability, especially lab space, for precision A, diesel tech, small engines. And so this is the rendering, um, that JLG came up with, and what you see, the two-story is, would be, um, in front of our current building. And so that's, there would be a collaborative space where students come in, um, where they can sit and work on things, there's natural light, um, the board in the background where it says thank you would be a list of our sponsors, um, that would help put the building together. And then, I know this is pretty small, but this is a floor plan layout, and that's in your packet as well. Um, we would move our fax classes from the high school, um, to open up some space there. Um, and put almost all of our classes, our CTE classes in this building, our health science classes would stay at the high school because of the labs and no need to duplicate that. So lots of opportunities. Um, and we're looking to, if we'll have, um, meetings with administration within here and of, you know, is there things that maybe we can do outside of, outside of the league that we don't have to build a 20-some million dollar addition? Um, but to have that where all the students can go, one location, you know, okay, my kids are going to go to the CTE center, they're going to take auto, or they're going to take machine tool technology, 83 minutes, and then, you know, travel back. So, absolutely willing, we don't have any schedule set, what that would look like, um, obviously what would work best for your students, um, beginning today, end of day, lunchtime. That's all things that are, you know, in the works and flexible and keeping in mind the vision of what's best for our kids and our communities, because we want our students to come back. Um, I know they say in teaching, the teachers are within a 60-mile radius of where they grew up. I grew up in Springs. I came back eight years ago. Um, so we want to provide those opportunities for kids to say, I want to go work here, and this is what I want to do. And I didn't even know it existed until I went on a tour with this class, and there it is. So lots of opportunities there. So the equipment grant, Senate Bill 59, is $5 million for the state. Um, the purpose of and intent of it are, there's more than three goals, but support multiple school districts. So, um, you know, collaborating with smaller districts around us that, number one, can help provide, um, financial, um, income for us so we can offer these programs, not only ours, to our students, but yours as well, um, and being innovative about it. Aligning to post-secondary education and workforce needs, how do we get more dual credits for these technical skills to our students? Um, so partnering with Mitchell Tech, Lake Area Tech, um, and those conversations are all happening right now, um, to move forward. And then, this is an equipment-only purchase grant. So nothing but equipment will go into this grant, any brick and mortar, any salary, anything else comes out of our pocket. So, um, the things that we're looking at, diesel tech, um, a small engines classroom, a small engines mobile lab, which would have 15, um, small engines, two different styles of breaking straten is what I'm looking at right now, with a mobile workstation and an engine stand and a set of tools. So you would have two students per one engine, they disassemble it and reassemble it. That mobile trailer would be transported from here on here for six to nine weeks, then the next school could take it, the next school, you know, it'll rotate around. We would provide training for the teachers, so it's not like, oh, well, I don't know anything about small engines, I have a few with the A side of it. Um, and so I'm working on training for that, um, which breaking straten has, um, a pretty good education program, and I know Mitchell Tech has a strong diesel and small engines as well, so having those conversations as I'm working on this. Um, let's see. The, probably the neatest thing, um, and I know it really affects Dr. Steinhoff, and it's a lot of pieces to it, um, the second mobile lab that would be available to your students is a mobile meats lab. So basically butcher shop on meals. Um, the meat would have to be purchased from a same inspected facility, um, and there's some Mitchell and surrounding areas around, and it's on the Animal People Report, um, website. We would go through, so the mobile piece is inspected and certified, and so there's a lot of pieces to it. But Mandan, North Dakota, has, um, a mobile meats lab, and there was a, this was back in 2021, and so it's just a, maybe? I don't know, right here in the states, it's, there we go. All right.
Laying their hands a little dirty, learning about meat processing. A mobile meats lab provided by partnerships between Central Regional Area Career and Technical Center and Dakota Community Bank and Trust arrived on school grounds today. Students have the opportunity to learn about butchering and meat processing all the way to packaging. They'll only have access to the lab for six weeks before it makes its way to other regional schools. The Mandan Public Schools Director of Technology says, with processing plans shutting down due to COVID, now is the perfect time to learn how to process meat for yourself.
There's a lot of self-disguise in people learning, you have to be able to know how to do things more than just walk into a store and purchase something in order to get what you want.
After six weeks, the meat lab will head to Wilton Public Schools.
We already decided that it would be a lottery system during the year season. Um, so providing that opportunity, um, I know the job market for butchers is stagnant, but the number that are retiring will... My answer, women's basketball team is looking to get back into having a winning season. This year, um, the data supports, um, this. And so, um, to put this all together, um, you know, we would be close to looking at the $200 mark for the, just the things that we talked about today. Um, I'll be submitting a letter of intent to the state here probably tomorrow morning. I got it all written up. Um, we'll also do some auto, I don't know if you offer auto classes, but we're looking at some updated auto equipment, some laser alignments, um, some new balancing and tire-changing things I've worked with. Um, I've sent auto to compare of what should we purchase, what's industry-grade, where do we need to be? And that's a conversation that I'm having with industry, um, of where do we need to be, what do we need to provide for our students? So either A, they can go directly to you, to workforce, or B, they're going to be set up to be successful in, um, post-secondary, if that's the relative issue, whether two or four years. So, you know, thinking of student, then how can we best help students and community? So, I guess the reason I'm here is to help answer questions. Um, part of the grant, I need a letter of support from, um, Tom and also from the school board saying, yes, we are in support of this, or, you know, or not, whatever U of M board decide, and the vision, the vision that you have for your students. Um, and I, I gave him some pretty filled, um, ideas as well, but you are welcome to create it however you wish. We just feel like right now is the right time, you know, enrollment, kids are going online, they're really homeschool. Um, this would give an opportunity for those kids to get engaged and come back, just want to, oh, yeah, I really want to come back and do this. Um, it's going to blend academics and skills and workplace learning. Um, we'll get the kids out, my goal is to have internships and all of those things, um, if I can, if I'm able to help support that, um, decreasing dual credit and just growing partnerships. Asking industry partners, are you willing to have kids come in, are you willing to come to the classroom? Because a lot of times, they don't get asked. And so that's kind of the bridge that I'm building now, branching out, so. Questions?
Does anything like, here now looks like this been tried?
Not that I'm aware of.
So this is kind of...
Well, not, I know, let's see, is it Sioux Falls has their Career and Tech Academy?
Okay.
Um, and they allow Sioux Falls kids, and I'm not, I think they might allow some outside schools as well.
Okay. At one time it was, uh, West Central Tri-Valley, I know it did have some spots at that time.
Um, Northeast Tech in Watertown is, it's similar, but it's a consortium, so all of the schools come together, and they have a governing board, and it's kind of like their own little district.
Okay.
Um, and then Aberdeen, I believe they take in a few, um, surrounding schools as well. And that is the purpose of Senate Bill 59 in this grant, is you have to work with multiple school districts in order to even be considered for funding. So I know Dr. Steinhoff has been instrumental in working with the superintendent of, you know, if there's interest.
Uh, brass tacks. I know that sometimes things come with a price tag on them. Uh, basically what I would say is, you guys run on a block schedule.
Yes.
We run on a seven-period schedule. If we send a student there, we would send roughly one-seventh of what we get for student A. So if it was $7,128, let's say for a kid, you're probably looking around the $1,000 range, but that would be for your, uh, your law class.
Will you, is there going to be a cap on the number of kids per program?
There is, it's going to be dependent upon enrollment.
Okay.
Um, so like, I can speak right now, I wrote last week, our architecture and construction program, we take no more than 20 kids per class. Right now it's 11 to 16 seniors because we have so many. Um, one class is at 20, one class is at 17, and then one class is at 16. So we would have those seats available. Um, and we would want, obviously, to have our registration done soon enough, so it would coincide with your registration of, are there seats there? Can our kids take it?
That's, how do we ensure that Wolsey Wessington students won't get kicked to the end of the line over? I mean, where do, where do we end up?
Right, and, and I think those are still some conversations.
Right, we've been talking about reserving spots.
Yes.
Is what we've been talking about, like, uh, when, when Craig asked the question, I said, well, it's going to depend on the class. Some classes we might say, well, we've got kids that, we might have 10 kids, and others we might have three to five. So it's, it's going to depend on what the offering is and what they're able to do. But, you know, that was the same thing that Hitchcock Two-Layer and, um, Sanmore Central, same questions.
This is available to juniors and seniors?
Maybe freshmen for seniors. What, it depends on the class, um, like, of the list of offerings, some classes are only offered to upper level, and they have to have direct flights, and some are open. Auto one, welding one, open to all.
And I would tell you that, uh, you know, one of the things is, when you get to the senior year, a lot of times they are looking for things. And, uh, you know, I say, what can you do to keep you here, per se? But, uh, so again, this is, this is thinking outside of the box and saying, and you get to credit in some of these classes.
If the letter of, um, support needed proves to be submitted by...
Um, we put October 2nd, um, as the date. Have you done stuff about transportation?
Yes.
I only sat in on the last meeting.
She sat in on a little bit of it, but we, we were talking about it as, uh, this is something that they want, you leave it to juniors and seniors, give them the ability to drive there. And in that way, we could, we keep our costs down, but if you wanted to drive somebody there, then that would be an exertive for us.
So it would be, we would own that for a few days.
Yes. Yeah, as far as, yeah, as far as that goes.
So are all the classes like a two-hour block?
Eighty-three minutes.
Okay.
Every other day.
So if we were going to do this, Wolsey would come in from 10 until 83 minutes later, Tuesdays and Thursdays?
One week would be Tuesday, Thursday, and the next week would be Monday, Wednesday, right?
Okay, maybe you would try to lump Wolsey Wessington into a block to where we can run one bus?
Yes, yep.
But those are all things that, that we'll, you know, get ironed out?
But we wouldn't run a bus, right? Isn't that what you're saying?
I, I would, I would love to let the kids be able to drive, quite honestly, when they're that age. Chosen.
That would be rough though, because some, some parents can't, like, they don't have the luxury of giving their kids a vehicle to drive back.
Right. And you know what, those are things too that we can discuss, because if it's only three to five kids, all right, shove them in the way, and we can always talk about transportation.
So what are you going to do, like, it's 83 minutes an hour class is only one? Okay, so then what, like, if somebody does this for first period, what are they, if they're going to miss their second period for sure, then what do you do with that? Do you, or manage those periods?
Yeah, those, we're, we're going to work on all of that, just to see how we could fit that in, and that's something that Dr. Steinhoff has been talking about too, like, maybe you want to work it around lunch, maybe you want to work it towards the end of the day.
So...
I know that this is nice. I, I went to, they call it multi in Watertown.
Yep.
And it was only juniors and seniors, I went to South Shore, we were about 18 miles from Watertown. Bus left at like 9:30, they had lunch, we were back at noon. Um, I took welding one year, and I took building trades one year. And, I mean, we probably had 30 kids on the bus. And I had nine in my class.
So you have...
Everybody did it.
So we're not the only district that has a four-day school week? Correct. So have you guys thought about how that...
That was one of the questions that I asked last week of, because I think two of the districts that are interested are four days. And I said, what does that do? You know, what does that look like for you? And I'll let...
Yeah, and, and basically what we talked about was, well, it's no different than the dual credit classes, where some of the kids do come on Fridays to, to take things. And if you want this, then you understand that maybe every other week, you'll be going on a Friday.
And, you know, I, I think about, and I haven't run this by Dr. Steinhoff, but I think about the days that there's shortened classes or, you know, um, early release or things like that. I think that there's accommodations that can be had for, is it something that we can zoom in, or, you know, some sort of alternate, maybe we go to, that student goes to an internship or a job chat that day. So I think there's things that we can think about that are outside of the box, still providing that same learning experience for those students, but in a different manner on those days.
As far as the building, we're what about, if, if everything goes through, about three years old?
Twenty-seven, 28 is when this one would be done and, um, ready for students.
Do you currently have a building? Or you just, you do.
Yeah, it's, um, between the high school and the middle school, right on 18th Street.
So there would be some opportunities prior to the time.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, yep. So any other classes that you see on that sheet that we currently offer, possibly the FAA?
Okay.
And then Northern as well has some opportunities to have that, for dual credit classes, so.
Anything else for Jolene?
I'm sure we'll discuss it.
Well, if you have questions, go ahead and email me, I give them a double message on the show.
And, you know, if we have a letter of support that doesn't lock us in.
Correct.
I mean, it just, we need it.
Just that, that you are willing to go on this adventure with us, and, you know, for some reason, being single, you know, it's not a legally binding.
Gotcha. Okay. Wonderful. But just what I was talking about, considering our demographics have changed considerably, I think we had just nine, nine or 20-some went to Lake Area, which has passed years. But, but, but third, we never know who we have, someone that's supposed to be. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Which will be in the...
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Meditation and discussion celebrations?
We had two runners placed at, uh, the 281. Edwin got third, and, uh, Kendall got third at 281 Cross Country. And then we have the ALBA Award for board participation in May of TSC.
I think our girl's one of the coolest, the volleyball girls.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I was in Chicago, so, yeah. But, uh, yeah, so that's, that's good, but we'll need to get a picture of you guys with that, maybe right after the meeting.
Yeah.
You got it far enough away?
Yep. So yes, we did get the ALBA Board, the silver level board, thank you guys. We'll get a picture afterwards.
No. We don't need a picture either.
I think they want us to send a picture.
Yeah, you usually have to send it to them.
But it, it just recognizes the, the school board for, for their participation. And, thank you, everybody. Um, administrative records, Amy?
Hmm, I don't have any.
Okay.
And I did put those in the packets.
That's okay. You have, I saw... You have, I saw...
Mine, I added a couple things.
Okay.
I looked real quickly.
Okay.
Um, bus drivers, I talked to Carter this morning. Um, he is going to schedule his written test this week sometime.
Okay.
He isn't going to take it, so he'll be ready for the next portion. Austin, I talked to him today. He was finishing, uh, he was hoping to finish the video part today and then within the next week or two, he's gonna take this. So we'll have two that are ready for the next part, if they're short. Um, we have, we have the sod installed. It looks great if you haven't been out there. It looks really good. Um, actually, the day we got, started getting the sod done, Dave showed up. That was his first day here. And so he just don't bring in and, and we keep it wet and rolling the whole time, so that's really good. They said it's pretty common. There's a couple brown spots, but they said that's pretty common. I just, till it'll come back hopefully this next year, so. Um, creative printing was here on Friday, this last Friday. Um, Mr. McGur came and started installing the window coverings. You can see some up front, um, the front window and then on that, the door, the entryway door there. Um, he, they had a lot of stuff going on, so he said he was hoping to be back this Friday to start finishing them up. So we've had lots of compliments on them already, so that was exciting.
Which windows, sorry? Which windows are those going on?
So they'll go on all of the door entries.
Okay.
At each end. And then they'll go on the preschool room.
Okay.
And then we have a window at the end that used to be a door, so they'll go on there. They'll go on the offices. And then it'll line, um, the hallway to the gym.
Okay.
So all those front kind of entrances for people to, yeah. We did talk about that if we really loved them someday, maybe doing a couple in the gym, just so you can't see in the gym as well, but we figured we could add those on if we wanted to next year. Um, we're off to a really great start this year. We're doing SOAR awards again. Basically, if the kids are behaved and well-mannered and it's, and the high school's really doing it right now. We're really into doing that. So they're getting SOAR tickets and we have our local businesses that are supporting us. 281 is, has free things for the kids, like a, a drink. Buzzins, a, a drink. Taco John's has a meal. There's just all things of, kinds of things they can do, um, just for being good kids. So they've been excited about that. We have Kennedy Sammons from community counseling. She started coming to meet with our middle school students about mental health, physical health. It's a grant. She comes each year. She goes one week a month, or no, one week, one day per week until December. Um, we've had really good success with her. The kids really like it. Um, she talks about all sorts of things, baking and everything, I mean, everything under the sun. Bowling. And then we have some air purifiers. It was a free grant for air purifiers and we, I don't know how many we got, a lot. Every single room...
She went and cleaned out the...
Every single room got one. They were free.
Yep.
Um, so, so where's yours at?
Right here.
Right there. That's the...
They're getting a good air over there.
The only thing I should do, I'm sure, right now, we found out the seniors, the senior room had theirs on, but it was, they left the plastic on the filters. And so then they figured that out. So I need to make sure the teachers know they need to go and take the plastic, on both sides of the filters.
Anna caught mine today.
Good, good.
She got a source of...
She was fixing some of them. But they're very nice. They're very quiet. You don't even know they're running. Um, there's just some down there for write-ups, I guess. We had a couple of middle school, elementary, and then high school.
I don't have that.
Oh, yeah, that's because I must send you an email when she gets here. I can send you an email.
It's pretty quiet.
It's very quiet. It's been really, we've had a really great start to the year. Um, I'll be on a title webinar next week. We had a behavior specialist from the core, from our co-op here. She came and traces up our professionals in dealing with some of our new students that we have and de-escalated behaviors. And then Pastor Spies is coming for training on the AEB, CPR, and choking, August 29th, from eight to 11 for the staff. So we won't have any student time, really.
September.
Oh, yeah, should be September. September 29th. Is that on, is, that's over. So we won't have student time that, that Friday, just due to getting all the teachers embarrassed to hang out. Any other questions? Did you get this on the agenda?
Well, I, I...
Thought I'd leave it on the agenda, or should I talk about it now?
I want, I think we have to add that.
Okay. So also, I just wanna talk about that, so Dave, when you put a little bug in Dave's ear, then things happen. So, um, we talked about, for many years, we've talked about having, it should be the fencing, American Fence Company estimates in your packet.
It's in, in the middle, kind of.
So for many years, we've talked about getting our playground enclosed. I know it's hard to believe, but we've had escapees and they walk in sometimes, because they live in Wolsey, South Dakota, and so they know how to get home. Um, but anyway, we talked about, we talked about over here getting a gate put in, but still being able to open it so the skid loader can get in, so we could kinda lock this down. And then over on the other side of the commons, between the softball field and the commons, have an enclosure there. So to get those two things done, I think that's the fencing and gate proposals, call it Wolsey Playground. So that one, to get those two things done, is $12,126 from American Fence Company. And then the other one, he did, I think he talked to Moeen Fencing and they were busy, I think, just what was going on. And then, um, the other one, he said, "Well, then I started looking and I noticed that you guys must have replaced a part of that fence when you, when you added the commons." And so there's newer fence a, all the way around the ball diamond until you get to about halfway over here, and on this backside where the outfield is. And then it's old fencing all the way to the road and then all the way up to the, like, the batter's box type area. So Dave said, "I decided, just to get an estimate on redoing that, because the bottoms pull up in a lot of places and some of the poles are..." Some of the poles are good, but some of them are the old steel poles. And so a lot of the poles would be fine, but they would just replace the, the chain link part of the fence. So anyway, if we did that, that would be $13,556. That's the Wolsey baseball repair. So I just wanted...
Six thousand?
What?
Twenty-six thousand.
About 26,000. Yep, to repair all of the fencing and close our ends in. Um, I just wanted to kinda put that in there. But it's something that we think about a lot. We have, you know, students with special needs as well, that, you know, we have people out there with them all the time, one-on-one, but sometimes they're pretty quick. So we gotta be careful. We, we don't wanna lose anybody. So that was the main concern for me, was getting the playground secure, so we could make sure we, we had taken a little bit to get out of here. Um, but then, like Dave said, he just got the other part done because he could see that he was up there. The fence is up, is almost like rusty compared to the silver part, so. I just wanted to put a little helping here, here, that we have been looking at that.
One other thing on that, you know, to stick $26,000 in there, we need to make sure the fence is where it needs to be, because if that road's gonna get closed down in four years, eight years, 12 years, and, you know, things move...
We definitely don't have...
We don't wanna put a $26,000 fence in the wrong spot.
I also know, just talking about that in the future, like, I just happened to come across, since I was talking to one of the teachers, and she said, "We're really gonna try and start using this out here again and get some parking right going for the kids." So I think we need to be aware of that as well, our plans go. It's ours, but we owe you share, I would say. So, you know, just thinking about in the future, is that something, we wanna be able to have a softball field, their baseball field for the kids, or do we wanna, you know...
Talking fence, I have concerns on the south side of the football field. There's, I mean, you go to the game, there's kids out there running around the sticks, there's golf carts coming through, driving down the sidelines. Security's an issue. And it's, I don't know if anybody, the carts back there pays. I mean, do they just park back there and walk in?
I saw them in a playoff game.
So I don't know if that fence goes on the inside of the trees, the outside of the trees.
I guess I'd like maybe building the grounds to go, take over everything. Maybe Dave, uh, go through and have a presentation that makes support.
Okay. Home communities, whatever.
Okay. Uh, superintendent, is that it, Ben?
Yes.
Uh, 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 much of this I have sent to, to Jim already, but, uh, Dave ha, does have a, a report on maintenance and transportation. A lot of that's gonna be talked about when we get into building the grounds. So, uh, we'll, uh, head up with that. But our, our two gentlemen are close to testing for their busing certification, so that would be good. Uh, let's see, I'll go down to internet. We've had a few issues. Uh, again, I talked with Jim about this, too, and, uh, I've been reaching out to see what other types of providers are out there, because, uh, we're paying a lot of money and I, I believe that we deserve better service. That's just the easiest way to put it. Uh, our curriculum, Lindsey Laurie have been working on, on a couple of items that they're going to present on next month. But what we're doing with credit recovery and again, uh, when we speak vision, what can we do to gain and retain students as far as that is concerned? So, uh, there's a, there's a couple of items in there about that. Dual credit. Uh, if, if you have not heard, Northern is gonna be coming back to the Huron Community Campus. They will be, um, offering the dual credit at the $48 per credit at the Huron site. And anybody's open to come to that. So it could really turn into a neat college setting for our kids while they're still in high school. They're rebranding it. They're, you know, doing a lot of the things of like, this is what college feels like and a liable structure. So again, a lot of good things, and when you're 15 miles away, that could really turn into a good thing for us, quite honestly. Uh, let's see, moving through this, Affleck was here and teachers met, and, uh, one thing at the beginning of the year, Lindsey and I talked with the teachers about, uh, replanning everything else and then making sure that they're taking care of some needs that maybe they don't even know at all right now. At the superintendent's meeting, October 16th, we'll be gavel training for the school board and we will focus, uh, on policy, which was, uh, basically section B, which the policy crew has already gone through. But Dr. Wade Pobin will be coming to do gavel training with us that night, so I highly encourage all of us to be there, especially if you haven't been to one before.
Boy, Mason and I are the only two that have a...
And Jeff.
Come on, Jeff.
Okay, so...
We'll really try.
Yeah.
What time is that? Do you know?
Um, I'll have to look again, but I, I think I have it for six o'clock.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get the, I'll get the...
Now it's here.
It's here. Yep, it's here. He's coming here. Okay. And then, uh, let's see, what else do I have there? Yeah, Alice training coming up. Dave and I will be doing some Alice training, so then we can be instructors in how to deal with those difficult situations, the fight-or-flight stuff. And then I just have this section, uh, vision. You gotta, you gotta see a little bit of that tonight with, uh, Jolene being here and then, uh, wanting to get together and bring stakeholders in and start getting some things put together. What do we want Wolsey Westington graduate to look like? What do we, what do we want them to be able to, once they are, once they are out of here? And, uh, one of my big things still is, you know what? Be, be a person that's, uh, gonna be a good husband, father, mother, daughter, uh, work in your community, be active in your community, be able to do the things that citizens should be able to do. And, uh, so those are all part of the vision. Uh, let's see, homecoming. So just so you know what's going on, uh, we're, we're getting everything out, but it's going to be, uh, game shows will be the theme. Uh, I have been in contact with the Department of Transportation, sheriff, all of that, so we're good to go as far as the parade route. Uh, I have already talked, uh, with Dave about the kids, they wanna paint their names, and of course, you can't do that on 281, but he said, "Yeah, we would be fine with, you know, whitewashing, doing stuff on the concrete leading up to the school." They said that the city would be great with that. Okay? And, uh, but we are scheduled for a parade on September 22nd. And also, the Sunday leading up to that, we're going to have a proper TPing 101 class at Mr. Bishop's house. So, and it hits on...
They're teaching how to TP.
On top of TP. If they're gonna do it, they should do it right.
They need to know how to do it right.
No more messing around, dude.
And, and then, you know, also, get some permission and talk to people, and if you want us to clean it up, let's clean it up. But let's, let's have our fun. And, you know, uh, the one thing that I've always noticed when I, when I've driven through, uh, if I'm gonna compare it to something, Miller. Wow.
They're amazing.
It's amazing.
We did it right.
So, so I started, I started the stash board over here.
Okay, good, yeah.
I have some leftover from our TP experiments that we did.
So, so anyway, uh, we are, we are going on that. Uh, and then, um, I added this today, but just cleaning up some administrative items, actually from the end of the year into this one. You know, I'm the first one to admit it. I've been in a little bit of a fog concerning stuff going on, but, uh, getting our files in the right places and everything else. And I talked with Jim today. Uh, there was one teacher that did not get any evaluation, so I self-reported, just to make sure that we are covered as far as that, under codified law. And, uh, but the law does state, um, up until your tenure, one per year, districts have the right to add on to that. And then once you're tenured, uh, the state requirements every other year, but we do require them. But I just wanted to put that out there for you, just to let you know. And then, um, I think I was in Lindsey's office about eight to 10 times today, going, "Oh, yeah, here's, here's a, here's one, here's one." So just getting some of those things taken care of. And then as always, if you ever have questions or concerns, feel free to come in, email me, call, on your... Thank you.
Before I move on, what's everybody's thoughts on the CTE programs? Are you all ready to be submitting a letter of interest in it? I mean, I don't, I don't see where it would hurt anything that we submit it. Uh, yeah, we're not obligated, but it, I think if we did do it now, it may hinder us from joining the program, I mean, going forward. So I'll make sure I get that done.
And I, I can give you kind of a...
You sent me one...
Okay, yeah.
For her, whatever, and how it's called, you said.
Okay. Um, you know, and that's one thing that Dr. Steinhoff had talked about, because if you're the first ones in, you know, you're the ones that are gonna get the consideration after everybody else.
Right. So I'll get it done this week. Send it, I'll just send it to you and you can forward it on.
And I'll take care of it from there. And then I'll make sure that I get the letter put together and I'll make sure that all of you see my letter as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Your gavel training is October sixteenth, the only day we can do it, that's a home volleyball game.
I can talk with Wade and see if we can get it fixed because he, he had that week and he goes, what about this night? And I went, well. So yeah, I can, I'll talk to Dr. Bulis. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to get that switched, okay?
Attention. Mid central?
Mid central.
Okay. Core. Committee reports, I guess, um, you guys are working on some policy, but nothing at this time. Building grounds, I had a meeting with, uh, for them to come and look at the placement, but I wasn't able to make it of the gym. So I'm gonna try and get it done in the next couple of weeks. And I will try to schedule something with Dave to look at the fencing.
Student council, I will be talking to them when I come in to present.
Okay.
Just so you're aware.
Okay. Anything else under the committee? All right. Approve the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Jamie and Tara, all in favor? Motion approved. Minutes. We have, concrete is.
There's still, yeah, it's still a couple of weeks out.
Couple of weeks out.
Three, I think, is what it's up to, right? So probably two.
All right.
Except they got sidetracked, they're busy.
Now the fun stuff, the pickup truck.
Yeah.
I'll let you talk about that.
Dave has been talking about the, you know, the need since we sold the other one. But actually having a decent one that can pull our trailer. There is one on the, uh, the Huron auction site, the government one, uh, for thirty-two five. It is expensive, but it would do what we need to do, plus it would have a blade on it. And Dave did go and check that out. He goes, it would need sharpening, but then that would also help with smothering, you name it. So, you know, I, I, I told him, I said, look around and then bring it to us and see. Uh, because currently he's been using his, I don't know if he has a ramp or, or whatever, but he's been using that for a lot of things. And then we have had to hook the trailer up, you know, or putting it on the van or, or something else, or something a little more toy.
The money that we had for the surplus auction, is that, where is that?
It just went into the general title.
Do you know what that figure was?
Twenty-six thousand.
Something like that.
Do we have a vehicle budget? We're talking about a vehicle budget or anything. We didn't see what we had since.
Yeah. I can't remember what I put in it.
One hundred and twenty-five thousand was enough.
That number sounds right, but I always assume that's, that's like for buses, you know.
Well, when you talk about last week, we needed a new car for driver's side to add it come out of there, right? So would this truck come out of there too, or does it come out of something else?
Sorry.
Come out of there.
Yeah.
Where?
Would come out of the. Vehicle budget.
What other vehicles are we looking at?
Uh, maybe the possibility of, I don't know, an E bus.
I know, um, for us, it talked about that.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. You know, we found a, we found a decent used one out in Hurley last year and I don't have an issue.
How much did we spend on the car?
That was like, the car?
We have a lot of the year.
Yeah. But I know the bus was like around thirty-nine thousand as compared to about ninety-nine for a new one.
As far as the pickup, I'm, I'm very much against getting a thirty thousand dollar pickup with a plow on it. Because about the worst thing you can do for a pickup is put a plow on it. I mean, it just, it destroys transmissions and everything else. If we need a plow pickup, I have one I'll donate to the school. But I, I don't wanna see, you know, a thirty thousand dollar pickup that we put a plow on.
And I guess we could talk to him. I mean, we do already have, um, some means to move snow.
Yeah, skid loader.
Do we have a tractor for two thousand dollars?
Did we do that in the session?
Um, he was gonna talk to TJ.
Yeah.
And I talked to TJ because I was talking something from him the other day. And he had something else in mind that he was talking about.
Yep.
But those, so, you know, I'd like with James, if we already have the skid steer, now we have. I just don't why we need to experience.
No, I'm just saying that this one came with one, that's all, yeah.
Well, I guess I'd like to look at a pickup without a plow.
Okay.
How about that? Because I can see where pickups needed the whole stuff.
I mean, I asked you, you don't need to use mine, feel free, I've got the hitch on.
That's just for.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, on my side, we probably want them to use a school vehicle versus a personal vehicle.
I know.
So, yeah, if you could just talk to Dave about just looking at that.
Sure will.
Because I saw the whole pickups you talked to me about, that plows on. I just.
Oh, yeah. He, he did say he goes, I thought they were a little spending.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
They can spend the elementary roof?
Right, okay, so Dave did have a person come out and check the roof, you know. Basically, uh, you've got about a fifty-some year old roof on that fifty-some year old building. We had guaranteed roofing, I believe that's been coming out to do some patching on it, you name it. They did do like a core sample to find out. And what Guarantee told Dave was that because it has the rock on top of it, the, uh, the decking basically on it might be in better shape. But yeah, you're, you're really towards the end of the life on this one. So it's either spend a lot of money patching it or it's time to start looking.
And, and replacement?
Mm-hmm.
What roof did we just have done? High school? A year ago?
When I come to Al, I treated hatching on the elementary property, but it has to. Basically gave for me a date of the first time. It's a pass law. But he didn't have a bid yet.
Yeah, he, he said that in our meeting.
He's getting that estimate and then we might have to pay five left estimate come to take that.
Okay. But he is in the process again?
Always.
Yes. They just, he was hoping to have it tonight, but they didn't get it.
Yeah.
Okay, so by the end of the week, you should.
Yes, he got that for sure. Um, Mammoth, you ready for that one?
Yep.
Okay, so we've got the preliminary engineering report, which is handed out to you. The three areas, the parking lot, the playground, and then around the new gym. And they, they're all like phase one, phase two, phase three, uh, what needs to be done. And then they added their price points on there. I'll start with the gym, basically getting the ground around the building back up to where it needs to be. And that was, uh, I have to take a look at that. That was the, that was the least expensive one. But it was, uh, so where is it here? It was around.
And wouldn't a lot of that be taken care of with our concrete work that we're gonna be having done anyway?
That's what Dave and I was, was talking about too. So there's a lot of things that can be taken care of. But as far as, uh. Where is it? Figure it's figured on fifty-two, fifty-three.
Thirty-three thousand?
Yes, thirty-three thousand. Now, um, what's, one of the last things that we did before Shana, you know, we did add the extensions. I would tell you they're kind of an eyesore to be honest with you, but they work. But they were, they're talking about building up the ground around that, so everything still slopes away from the building. So that was the, uh, that they talked about there. The playground, which was, uh, the next one, that one had a pretty good price tag on it, uh, about a hundred and two thousand. And that was to fix the drainage issues, uh, in the playground area, or excuse me, improvement one. Most of the cost is in installing of inlets and piping in order to get and tie into existing stormwater system. Now, we have done a couple of things that we're hoping that will help a little bit with the installation of grass, slowing down some of that water a little bit. But, uh, just they're, they're wanting to make sure that everything is on great, but that's all written in here.
I also talked to Dave about that. So they put grass in there and those, um, the gutters underneath there were plugged solid. And they had been for a long time, so they cleaned them all out. So we can kind of wait to see, I mean, if that then helps us by then.
I'm not, I wanna see what the concrete work is going to do because that seems to address a lot.
I was gonna say that because most of these areas.
What, what is, is up that.
Yes, agreed. Now Dave did mention one thing that made a lot of sense to me. But in our, in our drive, driveway, our parking lot where we pick up kids. You was even saying that, that, that section that runs right up against the building, you know, where people don't park. Even if that was concreted and got that to a certain point, that would move the water out quicker too for us. But again, that, that, that was him, you know, talking about some of that. I was like, yep, I mean, I can, I can see what you, what he's getting at. But, uh, yeah, I would, I would like to hold off until we get our concrete worked up and see what happens.
I, I agree.
I would say we've got another big concrete project for next spring. You know, the rock, where we're looking at having concrete done coming out the other side of the library. Well, that sidewalk's nice, but then there's rock over here and all that water dumps there and comes back on the building.
And it just sits there, yeah.
So I would talk to that wall there and get a bit for him to just keep on pouring and.
I think here's my understanding was once he fixes all this that he needs to fix, I think that spot in the front that plugs. I'm almost positive he said that should take care of that because the drainage will.
Okay, yeah, it'll just, it'll be really good to see how things go once we get the concrete done. Then we can see how the water flows. Then we can say, okay, we need to do this, this one can go.
Yeah, I, I agree. Let's, let's hold off on anything.
Okay, that sounds good.
See when we're out there.
Okay, so, um, are you okay if I keep pursuing?
Yeah, please.
All right. All right, so the gavel training, I talked about that in my, uh, in my notes. And then the CTE collaboration, again, uh, talked about that. All right.
And let's try to get that October sixteen date.
Yep, and I've got that written down.
Is that a Tuesday?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday?
Yep. Yeah, and I, I.
I think it's the only game that week, so if he was open that week, that's the only thing we have.
Okay, I will, I will check and see what we can do because that was just a date that came up.
No, there'll be football on, possibility of football on Friday, Thursday.
Is that playoffs then?
There was volleyball on that time.
There's volleyball on the sixteenth, seventeen.
So the seventeenth, the eighteenth is a Wednesday. And I just don't know.
Thursday's nice football.
Yeah. Yep. But I can ask him, am I, you good if I ask him about the eighteenth and see if we can do that? That's a Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes.
I think that.
Okay, yeah, not a problem, I can do that.
Do that, that would be great.
Okay. And, you know, and if he can't, you know, nothing says that we can't go into different time because it's, it's a training. So, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got it.
Okay, you do kind of all of that? Okay, so yeah, if you're ready, Jim, for the.
Okay, uh, we had two resignations. First one is from Jason Bishop for the assistant volleyball coach. Said, I, Jason Bishop, resigned my position of assistant volleyball coach for the two thousand twenty-three season, effective immediately, September fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Thank Jason for all his years of coaching volleyball. Second one is, uh, from Darcy Langby, Wolsey Westington School Board, Mr. Rice and Mrs. Hader. After much thought, I decided to retire at the end of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Although I have enjoyed many years working here, it is my, it is time to end this chapter in my life. I will always be a warm bird and will remember all the wonderful memories I have made with my students and staff. Sincerely, Darcy Langby. Thank both of them. And we will have to come up with a plan for Darcy's, um, position. Going forward.
Yeah, again, approve the resignation.
So, yes, if I get a motion to approve the resignation.
So moved. I was waiting for you to get that, I mean, you can discuss it first. So moved.
Sorry. All right, uh, motion by Tara, second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resignations have been approved.
At this point, you guys are gonna have to bring someone. Like Jim was correct when he said someone will have to be back to us to cover Darcy.
Yeah, would be, I guess.
We don't know what then is. No, but because she's hired by, actually by Core.
That's, yeah, that's why.
We're gonna have to Core and find out what they're willing to do.
Yes.
It's actually not even where we are.
No, but that's, yeah, that's right. I figure if we start now, then Core at least has a little bit of.
I think she's already talked to Core, so she's, I don't know.
True.
Approve volleyball and oral internship contracts.
And there's, what, you said there's four contracts, right?
Oral internship, so I'm not for sure that oral internship with Jackie Fowles could come back to do oral internship. And Chris Boops will exist.
And for volleyball, we're looking at moving Shayla up to JP. I would like to open seven day position. Uh, I know that I have an individual interest in that, it's not part of the school right now. I talked with the, the coach, coach U-Tech, and they have just one gate this week. And then there's no tournament this weekend. So it'd be a good time to open it. This individual is pretty, would be able to come in and. I think we should open this up today because if we're watching them, if, I don't think they would.
How long would you want it open for, about?
Seven days.
Seven days.
And then, um, just if we could approve that position, just at the next board meeting, I'd give the authorization from the administration or whoever.
And they can start working then.
Yeah, I start working then. Because there's still two months of season.
So we're approving two contracts.
Right. Was there another volleyball contract?
I don't know if you want to go ahead and. Well, we talked about Shayla.
Yeah, she just said.
Yeah, he said for JP, to move to JP.
Well, I suppose it was Bailey for, but if we're gonna open it.
Yeah.
So it'll be three.
Okay, so yeah, let's approve the three and then we can.
Yep. Sounds like, okay, so can I get a motion to approve the oral internship coaches as well as, uh, moving up Shayla to JP volleyball? And, okay, Ashley and Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is approved. Approve substitutes.
Okay, I did include it in here too, but our substitutes we have at the, at the moment is Rhonda Lynn, Jackie Fow, Amanda Chipman, Vicki Newhart, Marlet Klanser, Libby Fleming, Tom Ben Smith, Pastor Spies, and Linda Brach. So I just wanna do a formal motion now.
Okay. Okay.
Approving all books.
So can I get a motion to approve the substitutes that Amy has listed? Tara, second?
Second.
Brooke? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? All right. Hope we have one, Stane, Jamie. So motion approved. Now the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Okay, and that is basically then what we had the budget hearing in July, and so just approving that one.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Any further discussion on that, I should say. Okay, okay, I get a motion to approve the budget as presented in the packet. Tara? Okay, Tara?
Second.
Catch you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then I included, um, like my letter that I would send to the county about what the tax levies are. Dollar for general fund, dollar thirty-two per thousand of add. Two dollars, two point nine five four per thousand of owner occupied and six point one one three per thousand of other non-add utilities. So basically that is what the formula is made up with. You don't ask for that, then you just don't get as much per kick. And special education's the same way, one point five seven four. And then with capital, they have one million five hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
So we get a motion to certify this?
So approved, obviously.
So could I get a motion to approve the, uh, the tax levies as presented? Motion. Jamie?
Sorry.
Mason for the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion approved. Um, we have executive. Um, we have executive session. Thank you, guys, for coming.
My perpetual motion machine is no longer perpetually moving.
We get a motion to enter executive session at six forty. Jamie. And Tara.